It is now six o'clock. I would like to call the Rockdale County Board of Education work session to order. And as we all know, today is September 11th. It would like to take a moment of silence, remember the ones that lost their life and the family that continues to go through the ordeal as September 11th. So just a moment of silence. Amen. Do I hear motion to approve the agenda as presented? Second. Can I get a second?
Second.
A motion to approve the agenda as presented has been made by Ms. Janie Jones and second by Ms. Heather Duncan. Is there any discussion? All in favor? The motion is approved by a six zero vote. We would now recognize visitors who would like to address the board. This is the time when we'll allow citizens three minutes to address the board. Please feel free to submit any documents to the board. Registered speaker may not assign or year they're speaking time to other speakers. We do not normally address your concerns today, but we may ask the administration to address your concerns and provide you with an appropriate response. If your topic involve a personnel matter, if you contend that your legal rights has been violated, we have specific grievance procedures for these matters. Speakers should be professional. And respectfully ask that you refrain from using profane or vulgar language. And you should not make threats, slanderous remarks, or engage in behavior that disrupt the decorum of this meeting. By submitting a request cards, you acknowledge and agree that you understand and will follow the guidelines for meeting decorum and public participation, which was listed on the comment cards you completed. I would like to welcome Ms. Jessica Oglesby to the stage.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Oglesby and I am a proud parent of one current Rockdale County student and two graduates. Classes 2022, 2024, and soon to be 2026. I will keep this brief by focusing on two key reasons why I believe graduation should remain at New Birth Missionary Baptist Church. First, logistics. Both the school system and the church have done an excellent job in managing the flow of people, parking, and traffic. The oh, the rotation of ceremonies among the high schools has created a fair and balanced system for families across the county. Second, safety. In light of recent large event tragedies, we cannot assume it can never happen here. Holding graduation indoors allows for a better security measures such as back checks and ensures families and students can celebrate in a controlled and safe environment. I speak from personal experiences. My oldest son, now a junior at Kennesaw State, was part of the post-COVID class to graduate in the stadium at Harrison High School. While we appreciate the ticketless event, the reality was it was unsafe, difficult for families to navigate, and my mother and mother-in-law, both with limited mobility struggled with terrain and the distance. There was not nearly enough accessibility of seating, options, and parking was chaotic. In fact, we were blocked in for forty-five minutes before we could even leave. This is not the memory I want for families to carry with them from such an important milestone. By contrast, my daughter's 2024 graduation, she was twenty in her class, at New Birth was held, was handled beautifully. She is now a sophomore nursing student at Augusta University. And that graduation experience, she still brings surprise. She actually watched a video recently. The production was stellar, the environment was safe, and it was, and it created memories for her as well. I still have the text threads from my family members watching the ceremony from that Wednesday from their offices who cannot be here from around the country. I just want to say for the sake of fairness, safety, and all Rockdale families, I urge you to keep our graduation at New Birth. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Oglesby. Now, now have Mr. George Kellech.
Good evening Superintendent, Board members, citizens of Rockdale County. You have in front of you this flyer from the Rockdale Soulwater Conservation District. I was on the phone today with the USDA, NRCS, and Washington DC. And there are many people across the United States that are becoming more and more interested in urban gardening and farming. And so on September the twenty-sixth at eight thirty AM, if you could make it by for an hour, we'll have the USDA NRCS local representatives doing a twenty-minute presentation on the Young Farmers and Ranchers Program, which is part of this conservation activities that we have. And so for details, if you have one one-hundredth of an acre or four hundred and twenty-six square feet, which is probably that little corner right there, and you register your plot or your acreage with the USDA, and you keep your receipts where you've been selling fruits and vegetables to citizens, then you can receive subsidies through the USDA for your efforts. So that's what I have. I've got extra brochures and we're going to all the schools and putting this out on social media and everything. We'd appreciate it if you could put it out on your platform. Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is the Superintendent Cabinet update. Superintendent Chair, so please introduce your cabinet and provide your updates.
Thank you, Madam Chair Jackson Led. Good evening, Vice Chairwoman Jones, Board members, to our cabinet and guests that are in attendance. We have several updates that will be shared this evening, and we like to begin first with Ms. Kimberly Hunter from the Office of Accountability and Student School Performance.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board members, Madam Superintendent, Cabinet and guests. Today I will be presenting our action item regarding the location of Rockdale County's graduation venue for 2026. Numerous factors were taken into consideration and make this a selection. I will begin with the parent-student survey. This year, we distributed a survey to parents and students of the graduating class of 2026. Their survey window was open from June twenty-fifth through July seventh, allowing twelve days for responses. The audience included both parents and students of the class of 2026. Survey components include a comparison of both sites, ticket allocation, weather impact, and parking. On our next slide, you will see our survey results. One thousand and twenty-six survey results were submitted. Nine hundred and twenty votes, which is ninety percent, voted for New Birth. One hundred and six votes, which was ten percent, voted for the local school. Our considerations, it is important to note that when identifying potential sites, we consider location, ticket allocation, and weather implications. Venues both within the county and outside of the county were reviewed. The venue that most closely mirrored the amenities provided by New Birth submitted an estimate that exceeded New Birth's cost. Feedback from parents and students were also collected and taken into consideration. Finally, we moved the graduation date to May twenty-ninth. This will allow our teachers the opportunity to attend. Since this is a professional learning day, teachers will now be able to coordinate with their local schools to participate in this momentous occasion. The action item. The recommendation is the superintendent will recommend that Rockdale County Board of Education approve the contract between Rockdale County Schools and New Birth Missionary Baptist Church for the venue for RCPS's twenty-two sixty-six graduation scheduled for May twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-six. Rationale. Having convened our twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, and twenty-twenty-five RCPS graduation ceremonies at New Birth Missionary Baptist Church, it was clear that the indoor venue was well received by our faculty, staff, students, and families. Most importantly, the inside venue enabled RCPS to achieve greater effectiveness and efficiency of execution of our graduation ceremonies by removing the prospect of inclement weather or extreme conditions requiring rescheduling our ceremonies or creating medical or safety emergencies for those attending our ceremonies. Financial impact, one hundred and five thousand dollars. The funding source for the graduation venue will be covered by senior fees. Do we have any questions regarding our venue?
Thank you, Mrs. Hunter.
Yes, ma'am.
Up next, we have Mrs. John again from CTAE. And I believe Dr. Brandy Johnson is joining her as well. Good evening, ladies.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Chair. How are you? Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent and Cabinet members.
And guests. My name is Deion Johnigan. I'm the Career Tech Director here in Rockdale. And tonight, Dr. Johnson and I are going to bring to you some updates for work-based learning and youth apprenticeship and for career and technical education here. But before that, I have an action item that I'd like to present. The Superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the Career, Technical, and Agricultural Education Local Application for Fiscal Year Twenty-Six as presented. The rationale for this is that each year we receive federal and state grants. And as a part of that process, we have to submit a local plan, and that plan has to be approved by the board. The financial impact of this plan is three hundred and sixty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars. Here you see a breakdown of that, one hundred and ninety-six thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars of that is from federal grants, one hundred and fifty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars from state grant. And then we receive ten thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars toward Ag Ed Extended Day and Extended Year to assist with FFA activities. That completes the action item. Now I'm going to share with you some updates, which I'm excited to, always excited to share with you all about what's going on in career and technical education. I started off with sharing, I wanted to share with you how CTAE aligns to the district priorities. One thing that you all know is that our students, we try to bring real-world, authentic applications into the classrooms. And it is our hope, and we've seen this, that students want to come to those classes. So I don't think attendance will be an issue for the CTAE classes. Students want to be there and want to get that hands-on experience. One thing that we do in all of our career and technical education classes is make sure that we're providing our students with those employability skills. And those skills are the types of skills that are going to contribute towards improving behavior too, because students are learning to talk through things, to collaborate, to have good communication skills and teamwork. And so that's our contribution towards that district priority. Content mastery, again, in our classes, not only, I think the biggest thing that you'll see is that the career and technical education classes bring relevance. And so the students, everything they're learning in math or science or ELA, they're now able to see how that's applied and how they can use that in their chosen interest. Development, we provide lots of opportunities for our teachers to attend professional development. We have a resource network that provides professional development. But also our teachers have the opportunity, and they'll have a day coming up soon where they can do this. But our teachers do have the opportunity to take a day to go back to industry in their selected pathways to see what kind of equipment is being used in industry to shadow, job shadow, industry partner, so that they can also find out what kind of skills our students need, or if there is any equipment upgrades and things that we need. And then finally, engagement. It's an easy thing for us because our students, through their student organization, are involved in community service activities, but also with all our teachers and even through work-based learning. Many employers here provide jobs for our students, shadowing opportunities, serve on our advisory committees. So that's our alignment with the district priorities. Now, a little bit about our demographics. You'll see that we changed a little bit since last year. We've continued to grow. This is just kind of a slide that summarizes all of that. But to get into more details here, here are our high school pathway offerings. Most notably, you'll see that at Heritage High School, we've added marketing, communications, and promotions. And at Salem High School, we've added financial technology. Here are our Career Academy pathways. And most notably, most recently added, of course, is nail care services, phlebotomy. And to our public safety pathway, we've also added legal services for those students that want to go the attorney route. And then in our middle and elementary school programs, there were no changes. Oh, one, there is one. So in our middle school programs, the changes that we now have computer science in all of the middle schools. I think Davis was missing last year, but now computer science is available in all middle schools. You'll note that with regard to CTAE enrollment, overall, our enrollment continues to increase. And you'll see that that increased enrollment has led to some positive data across the board. More students are taking advantage of the opportunities that career and technical education provides. And so as a result of that, we have more of our students completing pathways. And you all are familiar with the pathway concept, but in a pathway, our students take, have committed to taking at least three or more courses, kind of like a major, in a particular pathway, well, these one thousand, two hundred and sixty-two students completed that pathway, which means they completed all three of the courses or three or more courses in that pathway. As a result of that increased number of pathway completers, we had more students this year to earn certifications. So eighty percent of those students that completed those pathways also earned a certification related to that pathway, which is going to give them that competitive edge when it comes to employment. Like a stair step for our career-ready diploma seals. This is a seal that goes on our senior diplomas. And they have the opportunity to earn these seals in three areas. One is employability. So that's generally our students that are in work-based learning, at least two years or more, that will get that seal. We have leadership. That's for our students that have held an office in our student organizations or for our students that have served as officers or leaders in JROTC. Those students are recognized there. And then our most, the one that we get the most of, and you can see this broken down a little bit later, is our student pathway, the pathway seal. And that's for our students that completed, our seniors that completed a pathway. But not only did they complete the pathway, they earn their certification, they have done community service or completed a portfolio related to that pathway. So this is all about giving our students credits for their activities, their courses, and experiences that they've had that have contributed to them being career-ready. Our graduation rate, a slight increase there. We're at ninety-nine point five percent there. Just about all of our students are graduating on time, and so that's a good thing. Got to figure out who that one student is. Dr. Johnson is going to talk with you a little bit more about work-based learning, but when I was including the tables, I just went ahead and threw this in here, but she will talk to you more. We have seen an explosion with work-based learning. A hundred and thirty-four is our number in the spring. She's going to talk to you about the the growth and how much it even, this was just an amazing year. We had a lot of students interested in work-based learning. And so this number has increased since then, and she'll talk more about that in just a little bit. And what's neat about this is that that yellow number is when we had a, two coordinators, because one was retiring and and Dr. Johnson was coming in. And so kudos to you, Dr. Johnson. I appreciate your, your work because to have even more students than that this year and holding it down and making sure all of them are placed is, I appreciate that. It's been great. And then finally, this is just an overview of all of that information. If you're interested in the career-ready diploma seals by school, you'll see how it's just increased across the board. We even have more of our, at our Magnet School, more students taking advantage of the opportunity to complete pathways. So just exciting times for career and technical education and excited about what our students are going to do with the skills that they've gained in our pathways. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Johnson so she can continue talking about work-based learning.
Good evening. So again, I'm Brandy Johnson, the Work-Based Learning Coordinator, and I have some of my students here in support. So last year with work-based learning, we had a total of a hundred and thirty-four students in the program. And so those students are in different categories. So they're either ESD. Those are students that their placement is not necessarily, it might be like they're working a paid job, but it doesn't necessarily align with their CTAE pathway. And only twenty-five percent or less of our students can be ESD students. Most of our students are interns. Those are students that have completed at least two years, one, or they're in the second year, or they've completed two years or more of their pathway classes. And it's usually typically an unpaid position. Our youth apprentices are those students that we track after graduation. And so those students are basically, they have to have seven hundred and twenty hours outside in a certification, a credit. So usually it's either they graduated from technical school or they, and they did an internship or graduated from a four-year college. And we also, and so our yet tracking students are how many students that we're actually tracking. Typically, we do get partners, so people call all the time and they want to try to, a lot of times they call a little bit too late in the year to actually get on with the work-based learning partner, but they do, I do get the information and talk to them and try, if we have students that are interested in their fields and areas, we do try to get those partners involved with us. So last year, we had ten that were new employers. A lot of our employers are typically already established with us. So the hours worked. We had twenty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven hours and wages earned. So a lot of our students don't work paid positions. They, many work unpaid positions. But of those who did work paid positions, it was over fifty-five thousand dollars. So last year with job visits, I definitely want this number to increase this year, but it was about a hundred and eighty-two job visits. And I have way more students, and typically I'm supposed to do two-site visits per semester per student. So if you do the math on that, it's really a lot of visits. And then employer assessment. So our students get assessed by their employers twice each semester. And so they'll, they have one actually coming up in October, and they'll have another one in the beginning of December. So you can see those numbers. There are, I'll talk a little bit about this, the Georgia Best certificates. We have seventy-five students that earn that. They have to do certain criteria in order to get a Georgia Best certificate. And then seventy-seven of our students, so they're not only enrolled in work-based learning, but they're also enrolled in dual enrollment. And several of them are enrolled in dual enrollment for their particular pathway. And then our youth apprentice program completers, that means of the students that I track, they have finished their, usually it's a student who's four years out from the program. We had four of those that they had met the credentials already, and they had graduated and done their apprenticeships. And our graduation rate was a hundred percent. We had, one of the things we love, Josh Kane, he worked with us for two years in work-based learning, but he actually was the Georgia College and Career Student of the Year. He was a Heritage High School student, but he was for the entire state of Georgia. He was the College and Career Student of the We also had Aiden Robinson, who was a star student at Salem High School in the work-based learning program. So what I talked about earlier with the Georgia Best Employability Skills, so from, I meet with students at the beginning of the first semester for two weeks. In those two weeks, we talk about different modules that they have to do. And we talk extensively about different employability skills or soft skills that their employers want them to have. And then throughout the school year, they do portfolio assignments. The year-one students do portfolio assignments that align with these Georgia Best Employability Skills. If they do their portfolio assignments every month and they get evaluated second semester at at least an eighty percent, they had to have worked at their job for at least ninety days. But if they get observed at eighty percent or above, then they will be eligible for a Georgia Best. So that's why you see there's a higher number of work-based learning students than there are that actually get Georgia Best, because either not all the students do their portfolio assignments, or they don't score at the eighty percent or better. The timeline, so if anybody asks anyone in the room about the timeline of events, because I get calls every day and I have to turn down students every day because they missed the application. The application goes out in October. So for next school year twenty-six, twenty-seven, it will go out October of this year, and it closes in November, because I have to have my list together by December when the counselors start doing academic advisement. So it's a very early deadline. So when people reach out to me in April and May, it's too late for them to get in the program. Basically, they find out in February typically, they'll find out if they got in the program. But I have, at this point, I've gone through their behavior, discipline, academics, attendance, because attendance is very important, because if you don't come to school, you probably will not go to a job. And so I've gone through all this, the vetting process. They also have to get recommended by their counselors. And then I give them their, in their welcome letter, I give them a bunch of information about what they need to do, because our process starts in the summertime with the things that we have to do. And then we start interviewing. So the students have to be in communication with me, because they have to start interviewing for the program over the summer and up through August and September. A few of them are in September, but we're hoping they'll all be out by next week. And then, and also there's a lot of requirements for those students that are going to Piedmont Rockdale Hospital. We have twenty-five of them this year. And so that takes, it's like nineteen modules, and then they have to upload a lot of information, so it takes them a little bit longer. So when we talk about applications, so I've done a few things to try to generate interest. And also based on the counselors, like the counselor at Rockdale Virtual School had reached out to me the first year and said that she wanted to make sure that the virtual students were getting the opportunities. So I scheduled a parent meeting the first year with her. But based on that, I just put out last year a meeting for any parents that were interested. And so we had, I had over sixty parents that attended, sixty parents and students that attended that. And then I recruit at RCA. I do talk to the homeschools, but I have not had time to go to the homeschools and actually recruit in their classes. But I do send the application. I tell them, you know, make sure that you share this information with your students. So based on that, I had three hundred and eight applications. That's like seventy more applications than we had the previous year. Acceptances after all the requirements were two hundred and eleven. I had to waitlist all tenth graders. The previous two years, we've had tenth graders. This year I couldn't take any because the interest was so high with juniors and seniors. I started the year with like a hundred and eighty students. So after schedule changes, or if they did not attend the mandatory parent-student orientation meeting that they have to come to, I offer five. If they don't come to one of the five, then we drop them from the class. So my current number is a hundred and forty-seven. We have several new placements this year. One, Micah Browning, he is with Judge Wood at our Rockdale County Superior Court. We had one, we already have one with Judge Nancy Bills, but he is with her this year. We have a year-two student that's at Beasley Drug Company, Bold Ministries, Stone Chris Honda came out to meet with us, and they have, they're taking a student and just a couple of other ones. We do have a student at the new, the new School-Based Enterprise at Heritage. And then just, this was just some information about our kind of top or highest number of placements. And so Piedmont Rockdale Hospital, of course, can accommodate the most amount of students. And then RCA Catering, they have fourteen, so they have, carry a lot of interns. RCA Engravings, that's with the manufacturing teacher at RCA. And then RCA Studios is the AV tech teacher. Learning Center, we have several students there. And then DUI Court, we have a lot of law and public safety students, and they took four students this year, which is really kind of unheard of. And then you just see some of the other ones that take a lot of our students. All right, thank you. Are there any questions? I didn't ask that last time.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Excellent presentation. And by the way, you are doing an excellent job.
Thank you.
My question is about the work-based learning placements. I heard you say that the request has increased. But I also noticed that you said there were two students that have participated. It's their second year participating. Can you share with us the benefit for the student being able to participate a second year? Is there a benefit? Is there a reason for them to get a second chance and not have a spot available for someone to be able to participate for the first time? So can you tell me your rationale behind that? And is that something we're looking at? Because of course, we can't accommodate everyone, but if we have a second-year student that's participating, is that going to add something to them for graduation? But if we have a second-year student that's participating, is that going to add something to them for graduation? Some kind of certification? Can you talk about that a little bit?
So definitely for the second year, it's a very good opportunity. I think this year I have 22 returning students from last year. For them, it gives them the opportunity with the networking, the, they can go to different sites. Or like I have a student this year that was at, I think she was at the Walkin Clinic. So this year, and Pediatric Partners of Gwinnett actually wasn't going to partner with us this year. And I said, can I please send a year two student? And I'll only send a year two student and so that we actually kept that partnership as a result of this year two student being there. But that's for the students, that's, it benefits them. They would get the same cord, they would get the same, they don't get the opportunity to do Georgia Best their second year, because the year two students do like LinkedIn posts most of the time. They only do a few of the same portfolio assignments, because they already did most of the assignments the previous year. But the benefit is, like I said, they, those students typically are very comfortable with the program. They've been successful. I did take a couple of students who were successful one semester in work-based learning and maybe not. They had something going on and the second they weren't and they applied and they begged and I, I just, I just gave in. And so I'm working with them and they're, they're doing actually better this year as well. But I do see your point in terms of they are taking a spot from another student. But to me, those are students that I know, know how to do work-based learning and they're going to be successful. Because I'm always like, the end of the semester, I'm going to get a few students who could not do what they needed to do. And they're, or they're going to request to get out of the program, because they're going to feel that it's too difficult for them. I know the year, I'm confident that the year two students are going to be able to be successful in work-based learning. If that answers your question.
It did, and thank you.
In cases, the employers want that, that same student back.
Okay.
I have one at Hedrick Dental. She's there, well, she was at a different dentist office last year and it closed in the middle of the year. Hedrick Dental took her. She's back at Hedrick Dental and they love, they absolutely love her.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have questions. If you could just fill in some gaps for me, you know, I'm elementary. So students who begin with the C T A E pathway and they are dismissed or they did not complete the pathway for whatever reasons, evidently you all have some type of safety nets in place, right? What are those, what are some of those safety nets you all have in place? And then I would like to know how are we going to identify who, all students that need, that have needs, so that we can have that 100% graduation rate?
Well, for the students that don't complete pathway or maybe failed a class first semester, I know that the individual schools have plans in place. So that may be a two or three remediation, depending on the student grade, a two or three. I know it varies from school to school remediation with their pathway teacher to try and get them back on track and maybe get credit for that first semester course. Is that what you're asking? And then to find that one student, to get to the 100% graduation rate, I actually have given that some thought. And it's really a matter of looking at those rosters and identify, trying to identify those students, probably, I would say, mid-April, kind of like you do, the graduation coaches do with students, to, to see what the grades are looking like and have each pathway teacher looking at that to, to make sure that we've got everyone on track.
Okay, thank you. I have one more additional question, because I don't know. For the work-based, work-based learning and the apprenticeship, youth apprenticeship program, is that just for seniors?
So actually, they could be 15 and older. So that's why I've had 10th graders before. But the amount of students that I can accommodate, because typically these students have more than one period of work-based learning, which requires, you know, grading and everything for that. And so my, I might have 147 students, but my F T E is, might be 300, because of the number of, they can take up to three courses of work-based learning. So I can typically 15 and older, but because of transportation, like off campus, one of the issues that is kind of a big issue is a lot of our students don't necessarily have the transportation. So the, the school-based enterprises are very good for that, because it allows them to ride the bus. But if the students want to go off campus, of course, they need to be 11th or 12th grade in order to have that, that consistent transportation or for them to be driving to their work locations.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Mrs. Gillis, you're up next.
Good evening, Chairwoman Jackson Lett, Vice Chairwoman Jones, distinguished members of the board, Superintendent Chesser, Cabinet, and guests. This year, the Office of Professional Learning and Advanced Academics goals align with our district priorities of A, B, C, D, and E. Attendance, behavior, content mastery, development, and engagement. Each initiative acts as a lever. When aligned intentionally, they reinforce one another to create a coherent system, where we have teachers who feel supported, students who experience consistency, and leaders who derive with vision. It is this kind of alignment what churns isolated programs into district-wide renewed commitment to student achievement and growth. We are happy to come before you tonight to tell you how the Office of Professional Learning is supporting this commitment. Now I'm going to turn it over to Dawn Smith. She's the Coordinator for Teacher Effectiveness.
Thank you. Preparation is key. We have four district lead mentors that support the professional learning and support the Lead Mentor Program here in Rockdale County. We have Jessie Smith, Dr. Carmen Matthews, Joy Kimbala Costa, Bridget Head. They are anchoring our Mentor Core Team this year. We were able to facilitate a Lead Mentor Retreat on July 16th, where we calibrated expectations for mentoring cycles, modeled feedback protocols, and aligned on high-leverage coaching and mentoring moves, laying a consistent foundation across schools. On July 17th, we also facilitated a new teacher proctor orientation. During this proctor orientation, we trained teacher leaders in leading our district's new teacher orientation by way of providing small group support while also proctoring and facilitating professional learning sessions.
We started the summer on July 21st with new teacher orientation. We had 153 new teachers. That's 76 elementary, 72 secondary, and then 82 faculty comprised of counselors, behavior specialists, and an ESOL coach. You'll see the agenda that we had there. That's just some highlights of the sessions that we had. We set behavior expectations. We familiarized teachers with curriculum maps, pacing guides to support content mastery. And we had engagement through community building that helped create early buy-in and excitement with our people. One of the best events we had there was a very much robust R C P S community vendor showcase, where we had lots of our partners come out and help support our teachers. In addition to this, we also supported an E C S training for new exceptional children teachers. That was an additional day of new teacher orientation. And our partnership with H R helped for a seamless onboarding process from the day that our new teachers signed their letter to their first day of teaching. While Dawn and her team were busy at Heritage High School, I was across town with the R C P S leaders. And many of you, thank you all so much for coming out to Administrator Startup. I appreciated the support that y'all brought. At this day, it was full of excitement. We were able to give awards to our schools from Superintendent Chesser and Cabinet. During this time, we were able to set clear expectations and systems for monitoring and improvement. We helped shape our frameworks for behavior and intervention. Once again, we looked at that instructional leadership design for our principals and assistant principals with curriculum mapping, with the R C P S curriculum documents to help support content mastery. We hope that this was an engaging atmosphere that's going to provide that collaborative culture and visible leadership presence within our district. On the heels of that, the next week, we offered Professional Learning Institute. On July 30th, we had elementary teachers and paraprofessionals. And July 31st, we had secondary teachers and paraprofessionals. We offered over 122 sessions on these two days. You'll see there a list of some of the things that we offered. For our paraprofessionals, I was very excited we were able to host them in person. And they were very excited to be seen and be heard and be recognized for their efforts. We worked with them on positive behavior and instructional supports. We dealt with tier-one instruction and how to support the teacher in the classroom. And we ended with Dave Weber, which many of you will remember from our Leadership Summit. He came and taught with them about sticks and stones and the power of words in the classroom to help with that collaborative culture for students and faculty and staff. Then from there, on August 29th, we had another day of professional learning at three different sites. So Dawn and I were busy going back and forth to help support our teachers and our paraprofessionals. We had over 215 sessions offered on this day. You'll see again the highlight of some of the things that we offered. So for the beginning of school, we were busy ensuring that our teachers and faculty and staff are ready to meet our students in their classroom. As well as our, what we do for new teacher orientation, the beginning, we just don't stop there. We have a teacher induction program, which I'm going to let Dawn come speak about. But we ensure that our teachers are prepared each month with a book study.
So our teacher induction program is comprised of teachers with zero to three years of experience. They participated in this program to really increase our teacher retention, which is well in line with our district priorities. So this year's professional learning includes an emphasis on teacher induction program, which is how we welcome our teachers, how we develop them, and then how can, how we can retain them, so that every classroom benefits from direct support, strong tier-one instruction, and students experience measurable growth. And so we have a couple of goals for our TIP program this year. Our goal number one is to retain and develop our new teachers. Our goal number two is to build and increase capacity within not only our teachers, but our teacher leaders through mentorship, through, as Beth mentioned, a book study for our teacher mentors, which includes getting better faster, or get better faster. And then there's a book study that we provided for our mentees, which is called the Instructional Chas Chas, Making Learning Stick and Making Instructional Strategies Stick. Tip goal number three is to strengthen, again, tier-one instruction through the implementation and the re-facilitation of cycle for results, as well as teacher clarity, which allows our teachers to understand and to teach clear learning targets, to check for understanding, and to give responsive reteaching and enrichment. And then our tip goal number four is assessment literacy. Tip goal number five is access to all things. And so we do want to, again, thank our Exceptional Children Services, who have provided a cohort of our new teachers specifically for the Exceptional Children Services. How we will measure progress this year. And so progress will be measured through, and continuous improvement. We'll monitor retention of our new teachers at the 30, 60, and 90-day mark, as well as their success using surveys, as well as gaining the experience from our mentors. We will review instructional artifacts through lesson plans, student work, common assessment data, as well as facilitating data protocols through the P L C process. And then we'll capture new teacher confidence and their needs, again, through post-checks and coaching check-ins.
As Dawn mentioned, the support we have for new teachers ongoing throughout the year, we also offer support for leadership ongoing throughout the year. We have induction-level principals that we are supporting in their first few years as well, as part of our leadership training. You'll see here just a couple of dates that we have for teacher training and leadership training. We want to make sure that our leaders are trained to use data effectively and to do that progress monitoring, that they are that instructional leader in their building to help with that curriculum alignment that supports content mastery, and that we are able to have dynamic, thriving school cultures in our C P S. We also have our fall new teacher orientation, which is coming November 5th and 6th. We'll have one in the winter as well. We want to ensure that we are keeping up with those teachers who we might be hiring throughout the school year to ensure that they are familiar with our C P S and the way we do things here. Before I end, I just want to take the time to sincerely thank each one of you for your continued support for our leaders, our teachers, and our staff. It is because of your unwavering commitment to their professional growth that we're able to provide the high-quality learning experiences that drive student achievement. Not only your support in finances, but also your supporting your commitment to coming out and being a part of these events, that speaks volumes to them. It speaks volumes to me. I appreciate it. Your dedication makes a lasting impact and we are deeply grateful for all you've done to help move our schools forward. Do you have any questions?
Madam Chair, I have a question. I want to talk about your initiatives to retain teachers. And I believe that you mentioned you're going to do that through development. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. That, that's one of the ways. So new teachers, as she was mentioning, that TIP program is anyone who's zero to three. So we have new teacher orientation, obviously, like we did in July. And then once a month, they're also meeting at their school level. And there's a lead mentor at each school. And then the new teachers have a mentor as well that's working with them throughout the process of the year.
So I would imagine that the reason why you're doing this is because you already know that that's one of the reasons why they're leaving. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. I would say that just from my experience of being building level and being at central office, that those first couple of years, you are trying to survive and we want to help you thrive while you are surviving. And we want to make sure that we can help embed that support. Not only that, one of the things, the Instructional Chacha, but we actually have it here if you wanted to look at it. It kind of helps break down that content, because we're, we're getting educators who are willing to come work. They love kids, they want to be here. But sometimes we don't have everything that we need as far as content mastery, pedagogy, behavioral, and so forth. So it's our job to make sure that we're giving them all the resources they need where they can thrive in that classroom.
Okay, so I want to be transparent. The reason why I asked that question, because when we say retain, so, you know, I hear a lot, you know, I hear a lot of things out in the community that one of the reasons why teachers leave is for money. Pay, they're looking for more pay. And so we just talked about that a couple of meetings ago. Where we stand as we, as we related to other districts around us. I think we're number two at the lowest pay, two Douglas, Douglas County, and then Rockdale County that are the two lowest pay. I want to know, my question is this, and you don't have to answer it now, but you can get back with me on it. I want to know what kind of research have we done internally to find out really why our teachers are leaving and why we're not keeping them past a certain number of days? What's a good time? Because we know people aren't, the people that's going to be here for 30 years, they're not here anymore. They're not doing that. That's your baby boomers and maybe your Gen X is probably. But now people don't stay as long. Do we know data that shares with us what is anticipated time that teachers are staying? And what can we do to really retain? But what is it that they want? What, what can we do different? Have we talked with them? Have we given them the opportunity to give us the feedback on what they want in order to stay? So those are just some questions that I have that I really would like to, to know. Are we doing the legwork to really figure out what can we do to keep teachers or retain? Because honestly, when I look at our data, based on what's given to me, they're not staying.
And Mrs. Brown, if I may interject, because I think I might be able to have, answer some of the questions that I hear you're asking. I recently, Ms. Stevens and I were in conversation about the exit survey, so that we can ascertain exactly what you're asking, why our teachers are leaving and what are some of those causes in terms of what they may be doing. And so she was able to pull that information from last year, so that we could better understand and get that feedback directly from the teachers. And we'll continue, her process is to streamline that, to make sure that all employees, because some filled them out, some didn't, and we want to make sure that anybody who's leaving, we can get a total grasp in terms of why they may be exiting. And so she and her team are working on that. But what I'll also mention too, is that just today, as a matter of fact, Mrs. Stevens sent out a teacher retention survey. And that went out to all certified employees within the district. And that gives them a chance to provide that same quantitative and qualitative feedback that we can use to better make decisions. So we are gathering that information. This is one part of that conversation. But certainly, there are things that human resources and some of our assistant superintendents are doing to get that total grasp or picture in terms of what our staff members are saying and how we can better support them along the way in hopes of retaining them.
Thank you so much. I didn't know that, but thank you for sharing that and...
Thank you, Ms. Superintendent Chesser. I was going to bring that up. I didn't know if the board knew that or not. The other thing I just want to interject that we do as well, is we have feedback surveys after all of our sessions for our teachers and staff, paraprofessionals, leaders to complete. So that helps us, just like a teacher, that's form of our formative assessment, qualitative and quantitative, where we can inform and tailor what our professional development looks like for that next session. So we tailor it based on the needs that the teachers let us know that they have.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you for the work that you're doing.
I also have a question. First, I would like to say I am overjoyed to hear that we've sent out teacher retention surveys. First, I would like to say I am overjoyed to hear that we've sent out teacher retention surveys. That makes me very happy, very excited about that. Because guess what? What is the best way to find out why we're not retaining teachers? Ask the teachers and utilize the data that they're giving us back. Now, y'all know I'm an educator. So if you're sending me a survey, is this survey an anonymous survey? Because if you want my full, honest opinion, I need you to send me an anonymous survey. So are these surveys anonymous?
Yes, ma'am. And it is spelled out there for the teachers in there. I see you standing up, Ms. Stevens. Anything you'd like to add? Grab the microphone if you don't mind, Ms. Stevens. Thank you.
It is through a third-party handover research. And so I was looking back at my email. They haven't told me yet when we'll get the analysis. But as soon as I have the analysis, I'll add it to the board meeting calendar so we can share that information back out with you and work on a plan. Cindy and I have been discussing how to share that back out to the educators because that's been a place where we've fallen short in the past.
And also be, being mindful of the questions that are on that survey. Because if you ask me, what grade level do I teach? And I say fifth. And then you ask me, how long have I been at this school? And I say five. Well, there are only three or four of us on the grade level. And I'm the only person that's been at this school for five years teaching math. So also be mindful of those questions that are asked at the beginning because those questions could clearly identify who I am. And if I see those stack of questions, how many years, what grade level, what subject, what school? I may not want to complete that survey. I've learned through experience.
Those questions are there to be frank with you. They don't give us the nitty-gritty details of who answered what that way. But I hear what you're saying, that that may change somebody's response. So we can work on that for the next time around.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you all.
I had, I had a question. Anybody can answer it, but did we not just celebrate the return of several teachers who had previously left Rockdale County and came back this year?
We did.
Is anybody asking them what brought them back?
I, not like formally, but I do know there were several because I was able to see them at new teacher orientation and hug their neck. And what I will say, to be transparent, what they said with me that brought them back is the same thing that has kept me here for 21 years. It is that family atmosphere that we all are together here to support students, and we don't get lost in the shuffle of corporate. And that's what they told me. They're glad they had to be back and glad to see the same faces are still here when they left.
Just to add to that, in talking to numerous teachers, it is not just pay that brings them to Rockdale County. It is, it is culture. And I want y'all to continue working on the culture and improving the culture because that's going to keep the teachers as well.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, Beth.
Mr. Bootenseek?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Jackson Latt, Vice Chair Jones, Board Members, and all the rest of us. Good to be here tonight. Before I get started on my presentation, I received the opportunity to have Dr. Keisha Rouse with us tonight and share with Superintendent, and she's going to share with you about an opportunity for a grant that is quite, it's a great, it's a great grant opportunity. And the reason we're sharing in this format is because she's going to give you some details tonight. And when the gentleman that makes the decision has made his decision about giving us this money, we will have a little bit of short window to make our, our commitment to the timeframe. So I'm going to let Dr. Rouse share what it is. Please, Dr. Rouse.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair Jones, Distinguished Board, Superintendent Chester, and Cabinet. Thank you for this opportunity. Mr. Bootenseek is passing out the information, and it is for the Arthur M. Blank Sports and Entertainment Philanthropic Grant. And what this grant opportunity will do is address some of those same concerns that I brought up the last time that I was before you. So this grant in itself will focus on several different athletic programs in enabling them to, one, be more safe for the equipment that we are providing for our students. One, increase the accessibility and the affordability for our families that may be a deterrent for their students or a barrier for their students to participate in some of our athletic programs. So from there, just a gist of what this grant will do. It will provide protective equipment for our football teams and our flag football teams, primarily at the middle school level where the statute of the athletes that we are accustomed to seeing is getting smaller. So now this is going to afford us an opportunity to get those shoulder pads and those helmets that are better fit and equipped for that stature athlete. In addition, female wrestling is now a separate entity within itself. So boys and girls no longer wrestle with each other. This grant will provide us an opportunity to be, to offer a female coach for the wrestling programs at all seven of our programs, enabling those girls to feel a sense of belonging and inclusivity in these wrestling programs. Soccer goals is another one of the infrastructures that this grant will provide us. In addition to, you'll see at the bottom that we're trying to do some of the field renovations, both at all of our middle schools, primarily at Conyers and Edwards, to make those playable fields so that we can ease some of that burden that our high school stadiums are having. And now we are having two additional sport offerings for our middle schools to be able to return to being able to host events on their site. As we're looking at that, the soccer goals will be part of that to enable those programs to be able to host those events. In addition to our schools that do not have the land space for that, we will still provide them with soccer goals so that in their preparation for their games, they will still be able to practice with standardized goals in preparation for those athletic contests. Middle school volleyball for girls would be an additional sport that we would add. Just looking to increase the pipeline that we have, the earlier that we can introduce sports to our kids is going to benefit our high school program. So this is kind of a pipeline deal that we would have for that. Already addressed the field renovations. And then the last one was really to look at our lower participating sports like golf, swimming, and tennis. So this grant would provide equipment for those students, also paying their participation fees. So the swim rental fees, the golf course fees, and any entry fees that they have for those programs. So now we're looking at reducing or eliminating that cost for them through the offering of this grant. The way that the grant is, it is a 10, 75, 50 grant, meaning that our contribution in year one would be zero. The Arthur Blank Foundation would cover 100% of the grant funding. In year two, RCPS would be responsible for 25% of that total. Year three, RCPS would be responsible for 50%. And in year four, the decision would be made, are these programs something that we have thought about continuing and looking at how we plan to budget them? Or if we found an alternate financial source to be able to sustain those programs beyond that four years? And so just to give you another idea, we are one of four metro Atlanta districts that are looking at the grant. Gwinnett and Spalding have received the grant, as well as the Cab and Clayton. And so whereas what I'm presenting now is what is in the formal proposal, however, it is not guaranteed that we will get the totality of the grant. But right now, the total grant for everything that is included is 1.7 million. However, the total expense that RCPS would have to cover over that two to three-year period would be $413,000. So that's what I have in that. And I provided you with the proposal that will be submitted. Preferably, we can submit that early next week and get the grant application. The meeting scheduled for Mr. Blank himself to hear our proposal and make a decision is October 15th. So hopefully, at the board meeting on October 16th, I could come with great news that we have received the funding for this grant. Claiming it right now. Any questions?
I do have a question.
Okay.
I'm sorry. This is the first time the grant is being offered?
So yes, this is a new division that the Sports and Entertainment, sorry. This is the first year that this is being offered because the Sports Philanthropic section of Sports and Entertainment is a new portion of the organization.
Okay. I was trying to scan through it really quickly, and I saw that a part of it was a 20% reduction in the fees for those, what you might call expensive sports, swimming, tennis, golf. But there's another part of it that I saw about scaling fees, where some students might not pay anything at all. Would that be limited just to those expensive sports or any sports across the board that we're trying to navigate, whether it's volleyball or football?
So the idea essentially is to cover some of those expenses. So we know that our athletic programs, their funding is the ticket sales and any sponsorship that they can get. So if we can offset the initial cost of some of that equipment, which includes golf clubs and tennis rackets. So we're offsetting some of those expenses that the schools would normally pay for. So now that affords kind of a wiggle room for them to be able to offset some of those expenses for these particular sports.
And my final question to Dr. Rouse is related to the one-year, two-year, three-year. Okay, so first year free, second year, what was the percentage again?
25%.
25%, then 50%. What are some of those factors that you see that might not allow us to move into being able to take it over fully? Are we going to use those years to say the tennis will work, but this won't work?
We do have that opportunity, but that also gives us a runway. So that the schools now can start to plan for what that looks like for being able to sustain those programs. Additionally, in our grant funding, what we included were the coaching stipends, transportation, and security. So there is a front side that we're saving that will again give us that runway to recoup some of those finances in year three and four.
And final question. So are you going to have to, are you able to embed this into people that we already have working on grant like Tracy Connett?
Yes, Tracy is already ready to go as soon as the application goes live.
So she'll be able to, she'll be, she'll be able to monitor the progress, provide the work that is necessary to make sure that we're staying within the boundaries of the, okay?
Yes, we've already been in contact.
You got me.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Rouse. And thank you for being here tonight, answering those questions, all your hard work. And so y'all say a prayer for Arthur that he makes the right decision for Rockdale. So we'll start off with some good news. The Magnet School under Mrs. Basket called the guys in and gave them a breakfast on a Friday morning to give, just give them thanks for all the hard work they've done. Talk about our facilities for athletics. We put on new, the new roofs on the dugout, the Memorial Middle School. As Superintendent Chester and I have been talking, there's been a drought of some work in our fields and our athletics thing. So we're moving forward and thankful for the work that's being done. We have the scoreboards in for the softball fields. So I shared with you this under construction that's now completed. And that was work done by our own crew, so they did an awesome job. Here you see where we've replaced carpet hallway with VCT and a new door on the transportation bay that gives us an extra bay to work with. And there is a magnet roof that's coming, gets getting close to punch out. We're thankful for that. Here's a project that you guys approved earlier on this spring, excuse me, this, this summer. And we've got it completed. I have another action I very much like this one for, for tonight, which brings us to that, that point. Superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the selection of Roseman Plumbing LLC as the contractor of choice to replace the Memorial Middle School hot water heater, purchasing under the Board of Education Policy DJRVC 1 and 2 for the sum of $175,040, as recommended by facilities due to major leaking and impending possible rupture. And the scope is the whole installation, the product itself, and making sure it passes quality control inspections. And this will come out of East Plaust funding. The second action item is the Superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the purchase of a 2025 GMC Canyon T4C43, two-wheel drive, not to exceed $36,756. Purchased through the Hardy Chevrolet Buick GMC, Inc., under the statewide contract 99999-SPD-SPD000218. And the reason for this is our unit M38, a F-150 1988 pickup truck, that thing's worked for the county longer than I have worked for the county, has reached its last mile. So we're ordering this other truck to put in our lineup. As, as you see, we try to keep these trucks for 15 years, which that one has far exceeded those plans. And so we'll make this purchase through East Plaust and then this new vehicle into our service roll down as it is approved. The Superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the selection of Sterile Kona USA, Inc., as the contractor of choice for the Sourcewell Contract 121223-SKI, quote number 3119 from August 2025, for the purchase and installation of fleet maintenance bay fours, heavy-duty bus lift for $305,345.32. Bay fours lift performance integrity is compromised. It needs to be replaced immediately for personnel, equipment, safety. This bay serves one-third of our fleet's 20-day rotation inspections. And this age, the age of this lift is slightly over 25 years. And unfortunately, the metal components prohibit us from refurbishing it. And so the service time is up. $305,345.32 from East Plaust five. There we go. The furniture for Barksdale Elementary and Flatshoals Elementary Schools. The Superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the purchase of furniture from Ernie Morris Enterprise, Inc., through the TIPS Cooperative Contract Number 230301 for $312,654.32. The vendor will provide the furniture and the installation services for both Barksdale Elementary School and Flatshoals Elementary School. The part of the rationale is that we are updating and replacing the cafeteria furniture as part of the renovation at these two schools. Vendor selection is based on pricing that is most advantageous to our district. The vendor will also store the furniture at their warehouse and deliver it per the phased-in timeline, working with Mr. Stewart. Selected vendors were based on requests for quotes using TIPS Contract 230301, furniture furnishings and service. This cost will come out of East Plaust in that, for that, those two projects. Transportation bus purchases. The Superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve Peach State Freightliner Thomas Bus Sales of Georgia as a vendor through the Georgia State Contract for the purchase of seven school buses totaling $1,076,500. The Georgia Department of Education bus replacement funds of $440,550 to the state QB will be applied to this purchase. Purchase cost per unit is $152,950, what I have ever thought. So the state allotment is $88,110 per bus. And we have two from fiscal year '24 and three from '25. And those funds will be applied as part of that $440,000. The new buses will add to the fleet HVAC and passenger capacity, along with the improved air quality in our environment. These units will be equipped with all our Rockdale County Public Schools base bus equipment to include climate-controlled air ride driver, remote control heater mirrors, and an air-operated door. The contract pricing was obtained on August 28th, 2025. $630,100 will come from East Plaust, $440,550 from the Georgia DOE bus replacement funds. This is my last action item for tonight. It's the termination of the Memorandum of Understanding between Rockdale County Public Schools and the Georgia Military College for lease of the building space located at 1012 Rossa Road, Conyers. Pursuant to Section 2 of the Rockdale County Public Schools and Georgia Military College Memorandum of Understanding for the lease of the building space located at 1012 Rossa Street, Conyers, Georgia, the Superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale Board of Education terminate the lease agreement between Rockdale County Public Schools and Georgia Military College. Pursuant to Section 16 of the lease agreement, the effective date of the termination will be March 19th, 2026, which is also the conclusion of their third quarter. The Rockdale County Public Schools needs this space to support additional programs for our students slated to start our school year '26, '27. This timeline allows Georgia Military College time to relocate and time for us to complete refurbishing the space to support our Rockdale County Public School students. And there is no financial impact to us. That concludes... That concludes my action items, my presentation. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Mr. Rogan?
Good evening, Chairwoman Jackson Lett, Vice Chair Jones, Board members, Superintendent, Cabinet, citizens of Rodale County. It's great to see all of you this evening. First, I want to thank you for your support in technology. And I want to share some pictures with you of laptop distribution and preparation that took place this summer. As you know, that you provided for us new middle school laptops for our teachers and students, and then also cases for the secondary students. And those were all put together this summer and then ready for distribution at the start of this school year by our Intels and our partners. So thank you for that. So I want to highlight our digital learning specialists who work alongside our Intels, our Tier One techs. The Intels being the Tier One tech, technical supports in the schools. Digital learning specialists being certified teacher coaches, support the science and have so far supported the signing of annual agreements, provide professional learning during new teacher orientation, pre-playing, professional learning days, and have had many individual coaching sessions with teachers. I want to thank Ms. Gillis and team for including the digital learning specialists in all of the different events and professional learning opportunities. To date, they have done 116 coaching sessions with our teachers. In addition to the things you've seen here, and in addition to Intels and the digital learning specialists together, have supported teachers by closing and resolving 3,449 support cases, having an average response time of 1.8 days and a three-day resolution time. That includes weekends. So that team has worked very hard to support our teachers in the district. Bring to you two action items tonight. The first is an update to the Internet Acceptable Use Policy IFBG. I bring this policy to you now because the state has passed Senate Bill 351 that requires all districts to update their acceptable use policies by October 1, 2025. And we were still getting guidance about this, about what the policy needed to contain up until the start of last month. We also, at that point, received a sample policy from the GSBA. So we were able to take a look at that policy and make sure that this policy has all of the requirements for the Senate bill, as required by the Senate bill. In essence, the Senate bill requires both technology protection measures and digital citizenship education in our schools. So we do comply with all, with both of these. We have, for the third year now, we're using the line-wise filtering system. This filtering system is robust. It allows us to filter websites by category and then open them up as needed as well. This is also in compliance of the Children's Internet Protection Act as well. We also provide our teachers and students with Neptune Navigate, which is a program, a platform for digital citizenship education so that teachers have the tools that they need to help provide that important instruction to our students. Digital learning specialists have shared learning plans with teachers and support this instruction. And we've been designated continuously a common sense district through common sense education for providing digital citizenship education to our students. And we plan to continue that work in the drafting of this policy and in compliance of the Senate bill. We did post a policy on the website for public feedback and we pushed it out to parents directly via Parent Square. And we received feedback over the course of a week for that. A lot of the feedback fell into different categories. Those are screenshots, excuse me, of the website and Parent Square. Fell into different categories of agreement and concerns and questions. So I picked out some of those pieces of feedback here for you that you can look over. Mostly the points in agreement you'll see is that they agree with the policy, they agree with regulations. They think that we should have a productive learning space for our students. And concerns are around the appropriateness of YouTube, locking up devices. I think that refers to cell phones. And then guidelines are needed, but they need more detail as well in this specific concern. So we took those and reviewed them against the Senate bill again. And so now I bring to you the action item that the recommendation, the Superintendent will, will recommend that the Rodale County Board of Education approve the proposed policy revisions to ensure compliance with applicable laws and aligned alignment with the district protocol IFBG and acceptable use. Rational, Senate Bill 351 requires school districts to update acceptable use policies to comply with the new laws by October 1, 2025. This policy reiterates the importance of internet filtering in schools and its role in providing a safe learning environment for our students. There is no financial impact. Second, I would like to share with you a project on elementary cafeteria project, projection refreshes. Here, several of our schools, we have five, that based on the refresh schedule are due for cafeteria projection refresh. Some of the schools have projection systems like the ones you see here in the picture. And this refresh will standardize and modernize the technology so that it's aligned with all of our newer schools that they have in terms of projection systems. This includes a projection, kind of like the projection you see behind me, wireless microphones, sound systems for those elementary cafeteriums. This allows that when the public comes to celebrate their student successes, they'll be able to hear and see what's happening to celebrate their students at different school events. And of course, presentations and then also for school-based teacher professional learning so the teachers can engage using it material as well with their administrators. So the Superintendent will recommend that the Rodale County Board of Education approve the elementary cafeteria projection refresh in the amount of $165,995.40, utilizing Georgia State Contract Number 99999SPBDPS0002100016. The elementary cafeteria projection refresh will replace outdated or missing audio/video systems in elementary school cafeterias, ensuring standardized and modernized equipment across the district. This will be $165,995.40 from Sloss. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogan. All right, Ms. Smith, you're up next.
Good evening, Madam Chair Jackson Lett, Vice Chair Jones, Board members, Superintendent Chesser, Cabinet, staff and guests. Tonight I'll be bringing the preliminary financial reports for the month of August. The revenues for the month of August were $10.5 million. Year-to-date, we're at 20.1, and that represents 8.8% of the budget. Revenues this time last year were slightly lower at $10.1 million for the month and 19.6 million year-to-date, representing 9% of the budget. Expenditures for the month of August were $16.4 million. Year-to-date, we're at $35 million, representing 15.1% of the budget. And expenditures last year were $16.3 million. Year-to-date, it was 34.8, representing 15.7% of the budget. Our incomparances are $4,076,335. Our fund balance is currently $14,072,632. Last year, we were at $13,377,588. On our balance sheet, we had assets of $20,772,762. We had liabilities in the amount of $6.7 million. And our fund balance again is $14,072,632. This concludes our financial report.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. And Madam Chair, if you'll just allow me just a few minutes to provide some additional remarks. And I do want to thank you for recognizing that today marks Patriot Day or the 24th anniversary of the tragic events that occurred on September 11, 2001. And so we certainly want to reflect on those lives that were lost and the heroism of that day. And we certainly know that those events continue to shape our national, national identity, our civic responsibilities and our global relationships around the world. I will tell you, Board, that we're continuing with our focus walks. And so today we had focus walks at two of our middle schools. That was Edwards Middle School and General Ray Davis Middle School. And I had the opportunity to walk with Mrs. Hunter. And in Ms. Kelly May's classroom, we went in and they were actually doing a fantastic lesson on the historical significance of the 9/11 attacks. And so she was able to engage her students in a very thoughtful dialogue about how that moment in history has transformed our world and our country as it exists today. And so it's certainly an important reminder for all of us about the importance of education and helping our students to understand the past and how that has prepared us to shape the future and that lies ahead. So I wanted to thank Ms. May and really recognize her because I thought she did an outstanding job. And I see Mrs. Hunter nodding as well. I do want to say, looking ahead, that we are in the early stages of developing a magnet program for both our elementary and middle school students, and not just a magnet school program, but expanding some of our offerings for our elementary and middle school students. And so that connects to that action item that you heard Mr. Budenseek present earlier regarding the cancellation of our lease because we do need some additional locations in which to provide those additional offerings to our elementary and middle school students. And so we are deep in that preparation. And so I will say that Mrs. Cindy Ball, Dr. Nadine Givens, and our current high school magnet director, Ms. Amanda Basket, they are serving to spearhead that work. And so they are assembling a planning committee, committee that will be comprised of stakeholders. I do know we have a board member who is anxious to be a part of that work as well. But we really want to gather different perspectives on how we can really grow those offerings for our gifted and high achieving students in those elementary and middle school days. So they will have that meeting in the coming weeks. And we look forward to see how they will really engulf that vision and bring about those recommendations that we need to really develop and, and implement that program. And so then lastly, I do want to say that I've started a round of advisory meetings. Last week, I had a chance, the Cabinet, Senior Cabinet and Executive Cabinet members and I had a chance to meet with our middle school students. And we were able to talk through our district priorities, to hear directly from them, their thoughts as we talk about feedback, to hear their thoughts about the work that centers around that attendance, the behavior and their learning that's taking place in the classroom. And I will say those middle school students had a lot of good things to share. They didn't hold back on giving us their feedback, and we definitely appreciate that. We are taking that back and using that to inform the work that we do. So that was last week's meeting. Coming up next week, we'll have a chance to meet with the Superintendent's Advisory Council. We will do a hybrid model in which we've invited those Advisory Council members to come on site to see in person some of the things that we're talking about. Or for those who can't attend, they'll have a chance to attend virtually. But the Advisory Council meeting will take place next Tuesday. That afternoon, we'll have a chance to talk with our elementary school students because again, we want to hear from our young people as well. And then that next day, we will meet with our teachers. So as we talk about teacher feedback, we will have a chance to convene and hear directly from our teachers in person and to allow them to give us, share with them their ideas and their thoughts about how the year is going and more importantly, how we can make it better for the, the coming months. So, Madam Chair, that concludes all of my remarks for tonight.
Thank you, Superintendent Chesser. The Cabinet has provided numerous presentations under information. I would like to ask the Board members to please review the information. We had, got that for you.
Oh, okay.
Okay, please review the August 2025 board minutes and provide any edits to any of it. We will vote on the minutes at the regular session. There's the old business or new business to discuss. The Cabinet has provided an overview of action items for the board to vote on next week. Is there a motion for the action item to be placed on consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I would like to move that action item number five be moved to the regular agenda.
A motion has been made to consider all items on the new business, action item number five on the new business, business consenting action items one through four and six through 12 will be under the consent agenda at the regular session. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Justin.
Okay, so a motion has been made by Mr. Justin Kenny to have all action items on the regular session, one through four and six through 12, and action item number five on the new business next week. Second by Ms. Janie Jones, all in favor? Any opposed? That's a six-zero vote. Do I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel? Can I get a second?
Second, Justin.
A motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel has been made by Ms. Janie Jones and second by Mr. Justin Kenny. Any discussion? Well, all opposed, all in favor? Six-o vote. We will go into executive session. We will go into executive session.
............................................................
So moved. I'm just getting ready. Come getting ready. It's now 7:35, and the board has come back into oversight. Do I hear a motion to continue the meeting? So moved, Janie Jones.
Second, Justin.